There we go. Hey guys and welcome back to another video. So today is another study session. It's a gouache study session because I put up a poll on my community tab. And I think it was between gouache, hands, lips and full body anatomy. And gouache blew it way out of the park. So that is what we're doing today. And I thought I would do it a little bit differently and have it as a voiceover. So yeah, let's see how this goes. I'm kind of just gonna do like train of thought kind of thing and watch the video as it goes along. So I decided to do a voiceover instead of like real time talking because I don't know about anybody else. But when I paint, I'm kind of in the zone and forget to talk. So yeah, it's a voiceover today. If you do enjoy these study sessions and you would like more, please give this video a thumbs up. And yeah, comment below if you want more. I kind of was thinking about trying to upload maybe two videos a week. So have the study sessions on Sundays and then just like the ordinary Wednesday video in the week. So yeah, if you would like that, please leave a comment below and let me know. Because if you do want two videos, I will definitely work hard to do that. I also have a nice little cup of tea. Yeah, so yeah, grab your sketchbooks or your watercolour box. Grab some gouache if you have it and yeah, let's, let's practise together now. I'm not very good at gouache. I don't think I'm an expert at it. I think I've used it like as watercolour before. Where I like place it down really thinly first. And I kind of didn't really want to do a lesson today. I just wanted to test my abilities. So there's this new game that's come out called Cult of the Lamb. I'm not sure if anybody's seen it before. I mean, it's, it's well, it's not out yet, but like streamers get to see it, play it early. So I've been watching Tag livestream that, which is really, really cool. So I think it's coming out next week on the 11th. So I think I might buy it because it looks like a really cool game. So yes, I took a picture, a still from the game and I sketched it out first. I didn't want to waste time recording the sketching bit. And then I thought it would look really cool as like a gouache illustration. So I was like, let's just go, let's just put it into gouache. My mic just would not switch back on because I muted it for a second. So yeah. I kind of just went with the colours that I saw in the piece. You will see later that I found it extremely difficult to mix the hot pink for the pig. So I had to get some acrylic paint for that. Shh, don't tell anyone for that section. If anybody knows how to mix a hot pink gouache, please let me know. I did Google it, but it said like to do, I think it said red, violet and blue. But when I mixed that, it, it didn't work. Yeah, so I was doing the background first, which was like, it's like a sunset kind of sky thing. And I placed down the dark colours first and then went in with some lighter shades. I don't know if that's the way you're meant to do it. If anyone knows, leave a comment below. Do you work from light to dark or dark and then put light on top? Who knows? Maybe it doesn't really matter because it's gouache. And then I moved on to the trees and the trees were pretty easy because they're just green. Like a turquoise kind of green. So I got some green from the palette. Oh, if anyone wants to know, I'm using the Hemi gouache. You'll have probably seen that from the start of the video because I was gonna record me opening, opening it. It's the 24 pack of Hemi gouache, I think. I have used, used Artex gouache before, which is really, really good. It was like a small one. I think it was like a 16, 18 pack or something. Or maybe not even that, it might have been a 12 pack. I'm not really sure. But I'll leave a link to the Hemi gouache that I'm using in the description box. I'm not sponsored. But I just really like these gouaches. I don't think I've used any other gouache apart from Hemi. And in fact, did we get one in the scroller box before? I'm sure we might have got gouache in scroller box. But we've had that many. I think I've been doing it for two years now, scroller box. Maybe or something like that. I think it was 2019 when I signed up. Yeah, January 2019. Yes, I think so. So yeah, I'll talk a little bit about Cult of the Lamb. It's basically a cult game. No, I've never been in a cult before. Don't think I ever will. But yeah, it's um, basically you play as a lamb and you like recruit people into your cult and have them work for you. In fact, I'll leave a link to the trailer if you're interested. I think I'm gonna go on the Switch. I could get it on Steam, but sometimes it's a pain to like set up your, your computer and everything like that. And sometimes it's just handy to have the Switch and you can play it anywhere. Because that's the good thing about a Switch, it's portable. I wonder if they're gonna bring out a new one. They might do. Yeah, so yeah, I was doing the trees and I started with like a, a dark layer. And then went on and added darker and highlights and stuff to do the trees in the background. I know we're not to that point yet because these study sessions are aimed to be like real time in, and like a longer video. So you can like grab a snack or your sketchbook and draw along with me, learn along with me. I have learnt some things from doing this painting. It might not seem like it, but I think every time you sit down to do something new, you learn new things all the time. And for me, I learnt that it's important to be patient and take your time. Because gouache does have like an ugly stage. And it also has a pretty stage as well, which is usually towards end of the piece. But yeah, I think I also need to get some new brushes. I think that'll be important. Because the brushes that I have are kind of hmm, too big. I don't have many fine brushes, like fine tip brushes to do details. And I only just switched to my thinner brush to do the trees. And I had such better control with that than I kind of wished I'd have done it to start with. Instead of doing it with the thicker brush. Now the Hemi gouache set that I have comes with, is it four brushes? Maybe four brushes. It comes with brushes in it. Like some are thick, then you have like a flat, flat brush and then some fine ones. But I have noticed when I opened it yesterday, which is when I filmed this video, that being Saturday, that the paint, the pink, because it's a pink brush, but I think it's painted and it had all cracked. The paint had all cracked. So I don't know how that's happened. So yeah, now I'm moving on to the green grass of the cliff. Because they're stood on a cliff top and I presume they're looking over the base, which is like the camp base where you set up. And I couldn't get the green tone of the picture very well. It started off with a bright green and then I dulled it down a bit towards the end, which you will see. So yeah, now I feel like I'm running out of things to say. How's everyone's weekend been? Mine's been alright. Anyone got any arty things coming up this week? I must say, I really enjoyed the collab video that I did with Annie and, Annie and the crew. I'm gonna call them. We had such a great response from that collab and it was amazing. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's new from that and subscribed. I just, it's amazing. The video just did so, so well. And thank you to every one of my subscribers that went over and subscribed to everybody else as well. I really appreciate that. I think it's great to support other artists, no matter where they are in their art journey. Whether they're big creators or small creators. I just think it's great to support people in the art community anyway. I think it's the best community. I'm not like just saying that because I'm in the art community. I really do think it's great. Like you don't see much controversy there. Touch wood, that it stays clean. But yeah, it's just filled with such positive things. And I feel like art is such a great way to, well, it's a great form of therapy, I think, just for me. Because like when you sit down, like when I was sitting down doing this gouache painting, like you just don't think about anything else. I put, I put on Tag's stream and then he'd finished painting, uh, finished the stream. And I was still going. So I thought, oh, let's put some music on or watch some other art videos. So yeah. Gotta say gouache is slowly becoming one of my favourite mediums. Obviously, my all time favourite medium is bic pen. Because I've been doing that a lot in my sketchbook, my Billy J sketchbook. And then there's obviously gonna be like watercolour as well. Love, love, love watercolour. I'm actually thinking about signing up to the Artful subscription box. Does anyone else have that or would recommend it? I know it's quite expensive, but it's a quarterly box. So I think you get four boxes a year and you get to pick your first box out of the boxes that are already out. So you choose your first box and then the rest is like down to Artful. So yeah, let me know if you think that would be cool. Because I'd love to start more art subscription boxes. I have been asked again by Up Crete to unbox another box. So I'm just waiting on that and the reply back from the email. So that's something to look forward to. And it doesn't take very long to get here either, because it's from Germany. I think Artful's from UK, could be wrong. I need to read some more on it, I think. But then I have the issue where you get the art supplies and it builds up and builds up. And you've just got lots of stuff everywhere. Like sometimes it's why I sell my scroller boxes. Because I just have a build up of supplies that I will probably never use again. And I'd rather it go to a home that is gonna use it. So yeah, that's that. I think what I'm gonna do is actually Google gouache. I'm gonna put my cup of tea down. It's gone cold already. I have a milky tea. I don't have a builder's tea. Now, if you don't know what that is, builder's tea is where it's very strong. Very, very, very strong. And I like my milky. I don't drink coffee because I don't like coffee. Tips on gouache, let's see. How to use gouache paint? Let's have a read of this, shall we? It's a little article. So what is gouache paint? Gouache paint is similar to watercolour paint in that it also, it is also mixed with water to alter the hue and vibrancy. They are both also applied similar, similar, can't say that word. And have similar composition. Gouache paint can be thought as combining the qualities of watercolour paint with qualities of acrylic paint. Gouache is quite thick and dries to an opaque matte finish. That's why I noticed with these Hemi gouaches that the gouache dried so fast, which was great. Where am I? I've lost where I am. Painting with gouache is very convenient because it dries quickly. I've literally just said that and doesn't reflect light. This means that gouache does not require you to wait very long between applying each layer and that your final result will be quite vibrant. I found that this one was quite vibrant as well. You can see it in the video. And I was filming this quite late yesterday. I think it was like after seven and the light was still outside. But you'll see later that the colour of the video might change. But I'm gonna alter that in the settings because the sun was going down. And then I had to switch my bright light on. I got a white light bulb. Thank you Nadia for suggesting that. Because I did have a yellow one before, but white is so much better. Right, gouache paint is made by mixing natural or synthetic pigments with water and gum arabic. Oh, I didn't know what, I didn't know that. Yeah, let's see. What is the difference between acrylic paint and gouache? Acrylic paint differs from gouache paint in that it is made with an acrylic polymer emulsion binder, while gouache is made with gum arabic as its binder. This composition means that acrylic paint remains more flexible when dried. Acrylic paint is also thicker than gouache. And is this the waterproof as well as more durable? If gouache is layered too thickly in an attempt to rival acrylic, in this way, it becomes prone to cracking. Now I have noticed that when I first ever, ever, ever tried gouache, I literally just smudged it all on. And then when it dried the next day, it all cracked. So I would like flip the paper up in the sketchbook and it'd just crack away. So that is a tip as well. Make sure you don't apply it too thick. Right, let's see. Does it say any tips at all in this? Hmm, what surfaces can it be used on? The best gouache paint. Windsor and Newton apparently is the best gouache paint according to this article. Oh, I have used gouache paint, Windsor Newton gouache before. Or is it watercolour? I remember that it's actually come up with this kit on Amazon, Windsor Newton and I. It looks really familiar to something that I think I've bought in the past. Let's see. What are the different gouache techniques? Since gouache paint is similar to watercolour paint in so many ways, the two mediums share a lot of the same techniques. We will talk about some of these gouache techniques in more detail below by talking about how to go about trying these techniques as well as what they can do, what they can be used to create. So creating gradients, here we go. Gouache has a thick and creamy consistency that can be mixed directly onto your painting surface. Now I have noticed this as well. So I usually mix my gouache paint on the mixing palette that's included in the set that I have. But you can also mix them on the painting, which is what I did for the background. And I kind of did this by just adding a little bit of water and just going over the two areas. So you can see like the orange pinky thing. Yeah, that's usually what I did. So yeah, gouache can be mixed directly on painting surface. What this means is that you can blend within the work and create subtle transitions in hue with very little effort. This is essential for creating realistic paintings. To experiment with creating gradients as one of your gouache techniques, you can apply two different colours on each side of a piece of paper with an open space in between the two. Yes, that is what I would like to try one day, maybe gouache painting a portrait. That might be another study session. Because I feel like we can study gouache in many different ways. Like you could watch a tutorial video, follow that. Or you could do what I just did, which is pick a reference picture and try and paint it and see how well you do. Now there's another technique called blooms. Blooms are a simple and popular technique that results in abstract and irregular splotches of colour. To create blooms, you will first make sure that your brush is wet with water and then add a bit of gouache. You can then put this on your painting. And the result is that colours spread quickly around your painting. Wow. I mean, they've put a picture up here. So I might try and put it on the screen if I can remember to do that. Then we have creating volume. You can create volume with gouache by making sure to place different values of gouache colour in different areas of your painting in order to show where the light is shining on a particular object. Now what I did for highlights is just use the white gouache. Well, it's kind of grey now because I for some reason can't keep the gouache palette, the white gouache clean, which I'm kind of surprised about. Because if you get the blue one, which I think is the 18 pack, it comes with two white gouaches. Whereas the pack that I got only came with one white gouache palette, which is a bit weird. I think so anyway. So what else do we have? Dry brushing. I think that speaks for itself, but I'm gonna read it anyway. To dry brush with gouache, add a small amount of gouache to the tip of your paint and use a piece of tissue or scrap paper to remove any excess paint. You just want a little bit of paint on the brush so you can move it, so you can move the brush over the canvas to achieve a light feathered effect on your painting. This gouache technique is used to create texture, highlights, backgrounds, and is great for artists that enjoy painting natural scenes and landscapes. So yeah, I've just remembered something because I've, I've just literally looked at my video right now and I'm painting the characters in. On this bit, I was like, I don't know how I'm going to create the colours to paint the characters. I was like, because I'm not really good with colour theory or mixing colours very well. And oh my god. I literally got my hoo hoo's out and thought, shall I just use them? But then I was like, no, 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 I can't. This is a gouache study session. I need to try and learn how to basically mix colours and try my best. And I managed to get the skin tone of the lamb, but I think, yeah, I already said it earlier on. I struggled with the pig, so I just got out acrylic, an acrylic pink colour. I don't really know if I could have made a hot pink with the colours in the gouache set that I had. Because when I added white, it just completely dulled down the colour. And the pig is hot pink colour, so that is why. So yeah, let's move back on. It says lifting, lifting is a technique to use, use to remove gouache. Wow. How do we do that then? You can lift gouache by wetting a sponge or a cloth with water and lightly blotting or dabbing the areas where you want to remove paint. Oh, that's a good technique. I might have to buy another sea sponge. In one of the Up Crete videos, we had a sea sponge and I absolutely loved it. It created some nice texture as well. But I'm not sure where you would get one of those from. Maybe Amazon. I actually should like buy a small little rag. I wonder if they do it in Hobbycraft and use that. Because I've seen other people use it and I usually just use like tissue paper or a paper towel. So yeah, I think I might get myself a rag. Oh, there's a technique called glazing. So glazing is a technique used to create deep moody shadows on a painting. To glaze with gouache, you will gradually mix water into your paint and thin it out. You can then layer it on top of areas that have already been painted and dried. Now I use this on the grass. I literally use this on the grass bit, but I didn't know it was called glazing. Learn things new every day. Let's have a look anymore. Reworking dry areas. Gouache dries fast and it can be an intimidating quality for many artists. But luckily, there is a workaround to this. Once gouache has dried, it still can be reworked by adding some water. Experiment with this by using some gouache to paint on a solid shape on paper and allow it to dry. Next, use a paintbrush dipped in water to paint along the edges of the shape. Oh, that's a good idea. Alright, so if anyone's gouache painting right now along with me, get a spare piece of paper, pick a piece of gouache, lay it down. You know, just do a layer, let it dry. Then come back to it when it's proper, fully dried. Dip your paintbrush in water and then run it along the edges. And apparently that allows you to rework the dry area. So next up, it says staining. To start staining, simply add some gouache to your palette and mix it with water until you achieve a thin consistency. Once you are happy with the consistency and colour of your stain, then you simply spread it across your paper as desired. This area will serve as a foundation for the rest of the piece. Staining is used to cover a large area of a painting surface with a layer of paint. This is a good way to create large fields, tall mountain ranges and atmospheric skies. I should have done that with this one. Kind of like the thicker, thicker background that I have anyway. And then obviously you have the wet on dry and wet on wet techniques. But that's literally exactly like you would do with watercolour. So I think I actually forgot to mention which type of sketchbook I'm using. So I am using the Arteza Watercolour Sketchbook. But I imagine you just use watercolour paper with gouache. I think so anyway. Let me know if there's actually a sketchbook for gouache. I just think it's the exact same really, isn't it? So yeah, back to the painting. I'm going on to the backpack now with a golden brown colour. Very, very nice. I absolutely love gouache painting. It's just so, so fun. It's absolutely so fun. And I think it's also easy to fix mistakes with gouache because it's so opaque. Like once you do watercolour, I think it's very, very difficult to fix mistakes. But with gouache, you can just paint over it. Same with acrylic really, isn't it? So yeah, any more techniques on this gouache painting thing? Oh, there's actually a supplies list. Supplies needed to work with gouache paint. So for anybody that doesn't do gouache painting regularly, regularly, like me, it says to make sure to have these tools. Tap or old newspapers, gouache paint, soft or medium synthetic paintbrushes, watercolour paper, Bristol paper or illustration board. Very nice. I didn't know you could use Bristol paper. I've just made a homemade sketchbook with Bristol paper, so I might try some gouache with that. I'm literally not really sure if this is hot pressed or cold pressed paper that I'm using in this book. I should really, really pay attention to things like that for if anybody asks in the comments section. Mixing tray or palette, water cup, rags or a towel, pencils or waterproof markers, optional, gum arabic, optional, water spray ball, optional, white oil pastel, optional. Why would we want a white oil pastel when doing gouache? Maybe it's because hmm, it's a good question actually. I don't even know that one. Right, so there's a step by step tutorial as well. It says set up your workspace, plan your artwork, mixing, preparing paints, test your colours. Now that's something I should have done. I should have had like a separate piece of paper next to me to test the colours. Because I think sometimes paints can dry a little bit differently on different papers. So you might look at the, the paint, which they're like jelly gouache, good enough to eat. Yeah, they might look different to what they do in the cup than on paper. So I think that's a good tip to make sure to test your colours first. Right, so it says start painting your base. When you're ready to get started, begin by adding base colours and layers. This means painting the background of your piece, which is what I did. The background will be usually be more translucent than the layers that follow. Hmm, I don't think mine all looks transparent. I think mine looks. Hmm, I don't think mine all looks transparent. I think mine looks all thick. But yeah, it says using thin layers and not using too many layers of guash is ideal because guash has a tendency to crack when applied too thickly, which we did mention earlier. Now, I've just looked at my video and hopefully this matches, but I have started painting the pig. So a li- a little bit cheating maybe here, I used some acrylic to paint this in. But I don't really think you can tell the difference, so I think that's good. So back to the the start in your work. So you must allow the paint to dry properly so that you can avoid unwanted mixing at this point. Some artists that have experience with this medium will know how to account for this, but if you are just starting, it is the best to wait for it to dry. If you begin painting on a layer you thought was dry and your colours start to bleed, simply stop in painting and go back to paint over the area once time has passed and that area has dried properly. Now, for some reason, that in my brain just did not make sense. I had no idea. Ooh, it says don't allow your paints to dry up in your palette. Now, I am such like a person for forgetting this. So my guash paints have like dried and they're a bit cracked, but you can fix this by adding water and then using a stick or something to mix it together. But what I probably should have done was to get a paper towel, maybe a thick piece of paper towel, soak in water and then put it over the top of the paints, especially the jelly guash paints, but you can do this on a mixing palette that you've used as well. And make sure, we have to make sure that the lid is like airtight, um, which keeps the paint wet basically. So yeah, once um, you've got your like base colours down, it then just says to begin shading and adding detail and then more layers. So yeah. I kinda wanted this to be under like forty minutes if I can, so I might try and speed up the end of this, just to quickly hurry it along. So it's not too long a video because we are at thirty-three minutes. Wow. I think, I think um, the last study session was thirty-one minutes, so we are a little bit over. But yeah, please, please, please let me know in the comments below if you would like study sessions to be an extra video on Tuesday, um, not Tuesdays. Oh, what day is it? Sunday. Because yeah, thumbs up the video if you really wanna see this or if you find this video helpful or you enjoy it, you wanna see more of it. Because it really helps out the channel and lets me know what you want to see from me. Because obviously every Wednesday is just gonna be a video that I choose to do. Um, if you would like study sessions, yeah, let me know because I quite enjoy making them. I think it's really fun. Whew. But yeah, alright, I'm gonna say that's it for this week's study session. If you did enjoy it, please leave a like, comment what you think, share with your friends, subscribe for more and in fact, no wait, I can't stop the video here because I need to go on to the section where I lined the characters. Just quickly, I lined the characters by using a Posca black marker. I think it was a three mm marker. But yeah, that's how I lined it. Usually you don't usually line things with guash, but in this reference picture, it, it did show that the characters were lined with a thin black outline. So yeah, that's what I did. But yeah, I'm really, I'm going now, so yes, um, subscribe for more and I'll see you next time with another video. Thanks for watching. Bye-bye.